Means back in order. Do I have a motion to untable the?
Motion to untable.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna be, we're returning back to that recommendation approved state aid note resolution. We had a motion that had been made but withdrawn to amend it to 20 million. But before we go into conversation again, I just, Ms. Campbell, could you walk us through this at all and just kind of explain what this means?
Yes, so the workbook in particular, on the tab that says cash flow, we take our beginning cash balance, including investments, and plug that in to the July 2024 beginning balance. And then we estimate all our revenue and expenditure amounts, including payroll, our state aid, other grants, taxes, based on projection. And then down at the bottom, the form calculates our estimated ending fund balance with and without the note proceeds. Then the ending, the ending cash balance then automatically populates up to the beginning balance in August 2024, and so on, and so on, and so on. And you'll see the total state aid for September is blacked out because we received no state aid in September. So what this workbook does, it lets us see in our, in our ending fund balance, what our lowest cash flow amount would be. So without the note proceeds, by September, when we have that third payroll, we would be 2.88 million in the red. Like, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't have the cash to make that payroll. With the state aid note, the number right above that where it says estimated ending balance, obviously, we would have 37 million. And again, these are projections based on an amount not to exceed 40 million. So after you get through the whole workbook, and, and that process takes place all the way to August of 2025, you can determine which month is going to be your biggest cash deficit. And that month gets plugged into the little worksheet up at the top right. And that breaks it down week by week. So we know that state aid, we get our state aid payments on the 20th of every month except September, but when that falls on a holiday or a weekend, we don't get it until the 21st. So you can see our state aid doesn't gonna, isn't going to hit our cash until the week of July 27th, instead of July 20th, because that falls on a weekend, the 20th falls on a weekend. And then we're looking at other revenues, and we plug those numbers in week to week. We don't have anything coming in on the first week of July because the district is shut down. Even though we're shut down, we still have payroll and other expenditures that will be processed before we leave and that will hit our, our cash, our bank during that week. And so you can see estimated ending balance, week to week, the week of July 20th is the 36 million dollars that I mentioned earlier. So that's the amount that the attorney would recommend that we borrow, based on this workbook.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cox.
Ms. Campbell, you say July, it would be 36. This number says 26.
That's for the whole month, but, but the cash balance fluctuates throughout the month. And there is one week of the month where we'll actually be down to a negative 36 million, and that's in the upper right-hand box, where it takes that, it takes that lowest cash month, and it breaks it out week to week. So to get through that one week, even though the month, we should end with a negative 26, that one week in July of the 20th, it's gonna be a negative 36.
Yeah, I'm seeing it. I'd like to restate my motion to approve the note with an, with an amount of 20 million dollars. And if it gets support, I would like to speak to it.
Do we have support?
Yeah, support. I want to hear what you have to say. Support.
Thank you. We're talking about July 2025. That means that if for a whole year, this board does nothing to change our financial portions, we won't even get over the 20 million dollar number until a year from now. But we're going to be paying interest, as the treasurer said, on 40 million dollars right away. You know, at some point, in, in my, it's my feeling, at some point, we have to take responsibility as the board to take control of these finances and put us in a position so that it isn't an issue a year from now. We've already said that we're 16 million dollars in the hole. Now we're gonna go out and get a 40 million dollar credit card. I just don't see how that's our path to solution. Thank you.
Have any other comments on the amendment?
I just have a comment.
Ms. Heinz?
Sometimes they say it's better to have it and need it than need to not have it. Because at the same time, we have to make sure we do payroll. Unfortunately, we still have things we have to vote on. We still have curriculum. We still, even though it's in the budget, we don't know what's gonna happen. You know, inflation, things happening. I'd rather be safe and have it and not have it at all, just like when you go to the bank, you get a loan. You can have it, because I used to work at the bank, and use that money to pay it back. You might not have to use it, but it's better to have it. And that, because we don't know what these banks, you know, fail. There's a lot of stuff going on in the financial world where we might not even have the opportunity to even get this again. So, you know, again, if we can pay it off early, beautiful, that'll save us some of the interest, but it's better to have it because we don't know what might happen. Just like with COVID, we never expected that to happen. Anything can happen. So again, you put a lot of work into this, and if the state is willing to help us, because it gives us a little bit of cushion, because we're talking about the fund balance, it gives us a little bit of cushion in the fund balance, because we still have to make payroll regardless.
Ms. May?
So you can apply for this annually, correct?
Yes.
So we're late now. So if we want, so let's say if we did the 20 million that trustee Cox is recommending, and then what is the earliest in a year that we could apply if we needed it again?
It, it always impacts your August state aid payment, but you would start the process in May.
Okay. So we would know, let's say, March, April, if we needed to do this again to get through the next year?
Yes, and ideally, it would be a lesser amount.
Right.
Because we're working toward.
Mr. Neal?
So I'm looking at the interest rates, it's not just 4%, so the estimated annualized all-in borrowing cost is 4.25% if we do the three set-asides that are included in this, this demonstration, this graph here. If we don't do any set-asides, it costs us $80,000 more. By the way, it's 1.7 million, not 1.6 because of that difference. But if we don't do any set-asides, we pay $80,000 more. But what if we ran this with the 20 million Mr. Cox is talking about with no set-asides? Do we go negative then? I mean, I'm hoping the board does something long before that as well, but if they don't.
So based on the workbook, the way it's put together now, the, the 20 million would definitely show us in bigger deficit sooner. Does that answer your question?
Well, not exactly, because I see our set-asides, our payments are scheduled for May of 2025, June of 2025, and July. But after three set-asides or three payments, that's when we really fall short, is in July.
Right.
If we make no payments, now, let's say we borrowed 20 million, it'd probably be half that set-aside, right? Approximately, just less than 7 million.
Mm-hmm.
So if we don't make 7 million, and 7 million, and 7 million, then we don't fall into a deficit. Granted, it will cost us $40,000 not to do a set-aside, but maybe that would be better?
So what our state aid note counsel told me, and he spoke to Michigan Finance Authority, he's got a contact there, he told me that because we have not borrowed in the past, we have to do the set-asides.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, it does.
Okay.
And 3 is the least amount of set-asides I see in the chart, so that's what you're saying, then we're gonna make us do this payment.
Yeah.
Okay. But to your point, Mr. Neal, it would be less the set-aside.
Mm-hmm.
So all of these numbers.
Well, yeah, it'd be half that, 7 million.
Right, so if we take half that, all these numbers drop by about half, so that puts us in a better situation. Have any other comments? All right, the vote is to amend the motion, I mean, to amend the resolution to 20 million. We're voting on the amendment.
No, I know, I have another thought, but I'm late with my thought. It was delayed, so. So I'm, I'm, I'm obviously struggling with the 40 million and the interest on that. You know, I'm not a gambling person, so I'm nervous about the 20 million. So I'm trying to figure out where we can go into a happy, a, 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 a happy, yeah, happy medium. Not 40, not 20, but I don't know what that is, and that's what I was just trying to think about in, in looking at this. Because I really don't want us to pay interest on money that we're not using, that, that if we're not gonna have to use it. And if we're making the decisions, and this kind of puts us in a position of we, we have to make the decisions, right? So if we say we're only gonna do 20 million, 25 million, whatever it is, then we know we gotta make these cuts to not have to be back in this situation. But I also find a little comfort in knowing that we would be able to go out for another loan for additional money if needed, and we would know that mid-year budget, March. So that makes me think that maybe we don't need the 40 million, and I'm, I'm a verbal, I'm sorry, I process out loud. So I just need to talk this through in my head before it's made complete sense and, and to make sure I'm understanding. So, yeah, so does that make sense what I'm, what I'm saying?
It does. And a point of clarification, then, Julie, though, if we went out for another loan, we would not get it in time for that July where you're saying it's the worst. Yeah, we wouldn't receive the next one until after. That's the only problem there.
But we should have made the cuts that we needed to cut to not be in that space in July.
And I got a question, too, because we still have contracts and stuff going on between that year, so how's that gonna work, too, with the budget? You know what I'm saying? Like, because that's a whole new year, 2025.
Just, if I could ask a question to the proposer of the amendment, would you feel comfortable moving that amount to 27 million?
Well, I agree with the treasurer, 27 is better than 40. You know, and I, and I, I understand what Ms. Heinz said, too. It's better to have it in your back pocket, except we have to pay interest on it. And we, it is a gamble, but we're gambling on the board. We're gambling on the board being able to do that which needs to be done at this time. And we have a year to do it under these circumstances. So whether it's 20 or 27, or whatever the number turns out to be, either we're gonna deal with our financial troubles or not. And if we do deal with them, I suspect we'll be dealing with them prior to 12 months from now.
Can I say one more thing, too?
Sure, thanks.
A lot of times when we vote on stuff, we're voting like 400,000, you know what I'm saying, like on average, we vote for like last, I mean, before we even got into trouble, it was not uncommon, we spent like 3 or 4 million in a meeting. I'm just saying, even though it's the interest, but we, we still have to vote on regular things, too, like curriculum, you know, things that come up, even though you budget it, but we still have to vote on stuff regardless. And even with the interest, we spend a lot of that in one meeting. I'm just saying, like on average. I'm just putting it out there.
We spend $12 million a month, no matter what, so.
Right.
You know.
And ask me for salaries.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
So my question is to you, Julie. So, you know, thinking of all the prescriptions that we have, that we pay out by the six-month, or three-month, or the year, now your proposal on here is for 40, 40 million. What do you think that will be a medium number, more comfortable, if we don't want to do the 40 million?
36 million.
36 million?
The current, the current motion is to amend for 20 million.
Just one last comment. I just, I know, we're bantering back and forth, 40 million, 36 million, whatever. I think this is crazy, talking about borrowing money instead of cutting the budget, cutting where we need to make cuts. We're not gonna get ahead. This is like just taking out a credit card and paying somebody almost $2 million to hold on to their money for a year. And we're not gonna get any farther ahead unless we do something. We're not doing anything.
I, I'm not sure what we would have done in the past hour since we voted on that budget.
Well, not in the past hour, not in the past hour, Mr. President, but what I'm talking about is, this is a huge step. You're talking about a lot of jobs here that goes to pay off another $2 million.
And we approved a budget, so without something like this, we don't make payroll potentially.
Couldn't be approved. We need to have a plan.
Okay, but it was, and the board moves together in harmony once the vote has taken place. The vote has taken place, Mr. Neal. It's time to move on to the current item in front of us.
I just have one thing.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Well, my thing is that Julie is our CFO. We, we had to trust her at this point, and if she's saying 36 million dollars, she looked at the numbers daily. We look at the numbers when she present them to us.
Ms. May?
So Julie, when you say the 36 million, you're looking at that under the idea or premise that we may not make the cuts that we need to make?
Yes, I'm looking at it based on the workbook.
Without making any cuts? Okay. So, and Dr. Weaver, were you, you talked about 27 million. Were you doing an amendment to?
No, I was simply asking the member if he might move on his number.
Currently, the motion's at 20 million. Okay. All right.
Roll call vote. Member Heinz, no. Ms. May?
No, because I would like to go a little higher than 20 million. So that's where I'm at.
Dr. Weaver?
Uh, no.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion fails?
Yep.
And that was the motion to amend, not the actual motion for the note.
Six more.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President.
All right, Dr. Weaver?
I'd like to make a motion that the board consider the 36 million dollar planned proposal, understanding that we're going to make necessary cuts in the coming year and in hopes that all that money will not be used.
Support.
All right, do it. Any discussion?
I have one more follow-up question.
Sure, Ms. May?
If we pay it back early, will our interest rate go down? Will we getting the interest back?
Well, if you look at the borrowing summary sheet, we pay less interest with the set-asides.
Right, right, but that's as low as we can go.
Yeah.
Okay. So even if we don't touch it?
Right.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying. I'm trying. Okay, thank you, I'm done.
Any other discussion? I, well, I understand the 36 is what we would need, but that's the situation we're in right now. If we get to next July 27th without making any cuts, this loan is one of many problems at that point, so we cannot get to July 27th without making any cuts. So for that reason, while I don't support going as low as 20 million, I, I don't support a 36 million either. Any other discussion?
I'd like to say, I just want, want to go with what Julie recommended. She did all the work, put everything in there. Again, we don't want to short ourselves.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's 40, but it's gonna be 36. So quick question, I'm sorry, too. So we know it's 36, but it's 40 here, so are you adding the interest onto it to make it the 40, or?
No, the 40 is a not to exceed number.
Not to exceed, okay.
So it would be something less than 40 million.
So if we vote as is prescribed, is exactly what you're saying, like the original vote?
If we, if, if the board were to vote on it as presented,
Okay.
it's still probably, most likely, would go to the state with a 36 million dollar request.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a question. If we don't make cuts, though, next year's budget will show the following year. We may survive with this loan, but the following year, we would be in, we would be approving a deficit budget again.
Yes.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So I see we don't have a choice but to make cuts, so again, that's why I don't support 36.
So you support 40, is that what you're saying?
No, I support less, pay less interest, and we make the cuts to get there.
Do we dispose of my motion in one way or another?
Do we have any other discussion for, well?
36.
Yep.
I propose 36.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion on Dr. Weaver's motion?
So question, so is it not to exceed 36?
It's not to exceed 40.
Not to exceed 36 million.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
Mr. Neal?
So, forgive me. So the request, original request was 40 million, not to exceed 40 million. And the statement from our CFO is that the state would more likely look at our stuff and say, well, it's gotta be 36 million at least. Okay, so we're making it 36 million. We're still borrowing money as if we're not going to make any change. And we can't give it back in the middle of the year and reduce our interest. It requires upfront for us to set aside or to make payments on a schedule. And the one that was been chosen for us is three payments somewhere near the end, which is 4.25% all-in for the borrowing costs. Yeah, we'd save money over not making any payments, that's 4.45%. But we're still, again, spending money that we should not be spending. A lot of money, you know, close to 2 million, again, maybe it's 1.5 million or something. But that's a lot of money that we should not be spending. We should be focused on making the cuts in the budget. We have the same amount of time to make some serious cuts. I know you said, no, we don't have time at this meeting. You're right, but we do have time. And we should be working in that, and that, that should not be our focus. It shouldn't be borrowing more money. It doesn't help anything. It doesn't help contract negotiations. It doesn't help anything. I'm against borrowing money.
Mr. Cox?
Just to clarify, the issue isn't the 1.5 or 2 million dollars in interest. The issue is, by this time next year, our district will owe 52 million dollars.
I just got one thing.
Heinz?
If we don't pass that heavily in November, we're gonna be negative 500,000 every, you know, year as well, so that's something we gotta think about as well.
More.
Or more.
Well, eventually more.
Right, so that's another thing as well. You definitely want to have some cushion, because we don't know what's gonna happen with this election. And because you got the Wayne Risa, you got the Smart, you got the Headley, there's a lot of stuff on the November ballot with those different initiatives.
Yeah, it's the election year for the president and the, and the governor. But what I want to say is, we trying to pass this 36 million dollars, not that we not gonna make no cuts, but because our cuts may not be effective as we need them to be, because we don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. We don't know what's gonna happen in the election. We don't know what's gonna happen in our student growth. Our, whether we have enough students or our students decline, we don't know what's gonna happen in the district. And having this money lets us know that we can pay our bills, that we can pay our teachers, we can pay our staff. And yes, 52 thou, 52 million dollars next year is a lot, but we planning on making, having a plan and making the cuts. But we have to start on a plan now. But the deadline to get this in is now. And we not working on a plan today. We have to get this in. It's late. It's what, 60 days late already?
Well, it's due, excuse me, we did the work
Okay.
this month that usually is done in May and June. We're not late submitting it. We have, our attorney has until July 2nd to submit.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's what we working on now, and, and hopefully, we can start making the process that we need to make and making the tough decisions that we need to make. But in the meantime, the bills still need to be made. Our teachers, our, our bus drivers, they, they deserve to be able to go on a summer vacation and not have to worry about if they're gonna have a job in September.
Do we have any discussion on the, on Dr. Weaver's motion? All right, Ms. Heinz, take a vote.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Ms. Heinz, no. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
No.
And President Gray?
No.
One, two, three, four noes, and three yeses.
And I'll make a go at it as well, I guess. I'd like to amend, make a motion to amend it to not to exceed 30 million. That's a number that requires us to make the cuts that we need to make. It's some, some of the cuts we need to make. We need to make more than that while limiting our interest.
Support.
Do we have any discussion? All right, Ms. Heinz?
You didn't hear that.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz? I'll say no, because we need that next one. Mr. President Gray?
Yes.
One, two, three. Three noes, one, two, three, four yeses.
Oh, that's just amended. We still need to, we still need to vote on the actual item, right?
Yes.
Okay, so now, do we have any other discussion on the item itself? It's been amended now to be 30 million. We're just voting on amending, so we now need to vote on the item itself.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Okay. No discussion around the item itself? All right, Ms. Heinz?
So we're gonna, so just to be clear, so we're voting on the original motion?
No, the motion is amended.
Okay, the motion is amended, okay.
But 30 million.
We adopted the amendment, now we're voting on the motion as amended.
I, I have to ask for clarification, because I, this was phrased in such a way that we're asking for a loan of 30 million, not to exceed 30 million, which supplants the original one, voting on the original one, which was what?
At the, at the C, 40 million.
I mean, haven't you supplanted it with the 30 million?
The decision has been made.
I don't think you need to vote again.
Yeah.
All agreement on that, then?
I'm confused. Can you clarify, please, one more time?
Because the motion was to amend.
True, but then, but then it was amended, and it was voted on, so the note is 30 million, it was approved by the board.
Right, we, we amended what was in front of us, but we haven't adopted. We haven't actually, we adopted the amendments.
That's not, that's not the way I would understand it, but, you know, whatever.
Well, it won't hurt to adopt it and make sure it's in the right area, so that's just about it.
All right, Ms. Heinz?
If we are.
Okay, so we are adopting the amendments?
No, no, we adopted the amendment, now we're voting to approve the actual.
We're voting to approve the actual amendment?
We're voting to approve, yes, we're, we're voting to approve state aid notes, note resolution as amended.
Okay. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five to.
All right, Ms. Campbell?
Actually, I think Dr. O'Phillie is going to present for Mr. Toco.
Okay.
So the next recommendation that'll be presented to the board.
So the next recommendation that'll be presented to the board is in regards for the purchase of district technology. As Jacinda Samara, Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the June Finance Committee Meeting, the ongoing proliferation of innovative digital learning technologies and the need to connect students and teachers to lifelong learning and information have led to a steady rise in demand for a variety of devices and services. This request is being presented in June to ensure that the deployment will be completed before the start of school. Based on this, we are requesting approval for district technology purchase. Prices used to support this purchase are from the REMC Save and Spot Connect Purchasing Bid Lists and Programs. REMC Save allows schools to collaborate and communicate to aggregate purchase, which lowers our costs and strengthens the reach of available funds. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of approximately twenty-nine hundred devices for district technology at a cost not to exceed six hun- approximately six hundred and two thousand dollars. These funds will be fully covered by both ESER III and Act eighteen. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, do I have a motion to approve Business Service Item, Business Service and Finance Item Six?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion?
Quick question.
Sure, Ms. Hines.
With this particular, because I know certain things we use like out of different funds. And with this one, will it go into the general fund? You know, certain things like the grants pay for like a certain amount for the, the different materials. Will it like eventually go or just all just ESERs and?
This is all ESER and Act eighteen.
Okay.
No general fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanna clarify. So we're purchasing two hu- two thousand nine hundred and ten devices, because that's what this says, not approximately, right? Okay, I wanna be clear on that. And then we're not exceeding the six hundred and two thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna be clear, because you were using approximate?
Yep.
And I wanna clarify, because we're not approximating, so perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Hines?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
All right, my next recommendation is also for the purchase of building technology. As Jacinda Samara, Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the June Finance Committee Meeting, the ongoing proliferation of innovative digital learning technologies and the need to connect students and teachers to lifelong learning and information have led to a steady rise in demand for a variety of devices and services. This request is being presented in June to ensure the deployment will be completed before the start of school. Based on this, we are requesting approval for building technology purchase. Prices used to support this purchase are from the REMC Save and Spot Connect Purchasing Bid Lists and Programs. REMC Save allows schools to collaborate and communicate to aggregate purchase, which lowers our costs and strengthens the reach of available funds. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase of two hundred sixteen devices and six carts to support building technology at a cost not to exceed fifty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. These funds will be fully covered by sixty-one A funds. Please note that while sixty-one A funds are part of the general fund, the fund may only be used to support state-approved career tech education programs. Thank you for your consideration.
Move approval.
Support.
Support.
Do we have any discussion?
A quick question. So I know once we purchase like the different materials, like do we have to purchase like licensing like so much after? Like is it gonna be an ongoing cost or just like a one-time cost?
I would not be able to answer that at this time. I would be able to take that back to Ms. Samara, our Executive Director of Technology, and present that information to the board.
If I could answer that, in Finance Committee, by making these purchases, we were able to keep thirty-five dollars per laptop licensing. We were able to keep that. So it would have been much higher had we not been able to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? And I don't know if anybody here can answer this, but what, I know this cer- this source of funding has to be used for state-approved reasons, but what other reasons are, are there for this type of?
Would you answer that?
It is restrict- restricted to career tech ed purchases and beyond that, I'm not sure.
But do we know, can it be used for salaries for career tech?
No.
Certain learning devices, I know, I think we gave one example, if they require certain specific technology or certain type of lab tables or things like that for their program, that's how it needs to be spent.
I think she did say salaries. I gave my minutes away. Or did you give away your minutes?
Up to ten percent, I think.
Was for salaries, yeah. So it was salaries. There's a portion that came through.
Any other discussion? Okay. Ms. Hines?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Um, yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Gray?
No.
Okay. Six, one, motion carries.
All right, my next recommendation is to renew the Mo- Mozelle Mobile Device Management. As Jacinda Samara, Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the June Finance Committee Meeting, Mozelle is a comprehensive mobile device management solution that provides the capability to manage and secure our fleet of Apple mobile devices such as iPads. The benefit of Mozelle include improved security, operation efficiency, compliance assurance, user support, and scalability. The level of licensing requested allows us to support the five thousand, five hundred devices in our environment. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the renewal of Mozelle Mobile Device Management at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred. These costs will be covered by the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I just wanna raise, because we are making quite a few purchases with technology, some from the grant, some from general fund. We had a very lengthy discussion about this and finance. And one of the things that was lifted was the fact that we have so many devices that are approaching or at end of life and understanding that a lot of our testing has now moved to online. And so in order for us to be able to give students what they need in order to even be successful, even to start, to get out the gate on testing, they need the devices, they need access. So I just wanted to lift that because that was a huge piece of the discussion that we had during finance.
Can I add today?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
And also. And also, we have had an increase in our innovative academy, which most of our students are online. So that's why the increase in the technology is.
Any other discussion? Ms. Hines?
Well, I do, I have a question.
Oh, Ms. May?
Mrs. Curry. Apples, their iPads, what grade levels are using iPads?
These were the ones that were through the grant, so they were first through fourth grade, either first through fourth or kindergarten through fourth grade that were deployed to the homes to use and then brought back. So to put the added security on those devices.
And then they're going back to the home?
They're going back to the students.
To take home?
Possibly, or to use in the classroom.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Ms. Hines?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
And President Gray?
No.
Okay, so we got one, two, three, four yeses and one, two, no's. I'm sorry. We got one, two, three, four yeses and three no's.
All right, my next recommendation is to renew Fortinet, a network security solution. As Jacinda Samara, Executive Director of Technology and Innovation, presented at the June Finance Committee Meeting, Fortinet is a comprehensive network security solution. This product is essential for protecting our network infrastructure. This selected product provides robust security measures including firewall protection, network, network analysis, switching capabilities, wireless access, and endpoint security. The price and specifications listed in the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance ensure compliance with our procurement policies and leverage cooperative purchasing benefits. People Driven have, has provided us with the competitive quote in alignment with NCPA Contract Number oh-one dash nine-six. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the renewal of Fortinet, a national security solution at a cost not to exceed thirty thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and three cents. These costs will be covered by the general fund. Thank you for your consideration.
Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Do I have support?
Support.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
Quick question. I know cybersecurity is super important. When it comes to this budget, was this kinda already put out in the budget that we just approved, like these amounts, Ms. O'Philly?
Not specifically, but we do have budget to cover cybersecurity.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, in a roundabout way, yes. This, this exact item wasn't necessarily part of that consideration yet, but the money was budgeted for whatever came forward.
An online item, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion, Ms. May?
And this is to Mrs. Curry and Mrs. Campbell. I know in the Finance Meeting, we did discuss the possibility moving forward of this being able to be charged to a grant or a portion of it. Has there been any follow-up with that? Just in terms of next year, because I know we can't do it this year.
Correct. So we've talked to Ms. Polikovich. So in terms of next year, we could look at putting that in, but as of right now, as you know, we couldn't do that right now. But yeah, so we're looking in to see if we could fund that through a title fund. Yep.
Any other discussion? If none, Ms. May. Do we have a science?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Seven, zero, motion carries.
All right, now we're moving on to three forty-three point twenty-two-three, Review and Approval of Human Resource Items. Dr. O'Philly?
Thank you, President Gray. At this time, I would like to make a recommendation for the layoff of the employee listed in the board packet. Information regarding this layoff has been shared with board members at another meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Do we have any discussion?
I just have one quick question.
Ms. Hines?
Since I know we were doing a police and fire academy, would that, would that affect that program that we're doing? Like are we re-looking at different program?
So we are currently actually evaluating all of our programs and all of our departments. This item is not connected to that part.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Hines, take a vote.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Pass.
Okay. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
So we got one, two, three, four, five yeses, one no and one abstain.
No, that was a pass, not an abstain. I was holding my vote to the end.
Oh.
No.
No.
Okay. Wow.
So is it five to two?
Five, two.
I'm asking. I think that's it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is five forty-four point two-four, Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution. Did I repeat?
At this time, I'd like to make a recommendation to the board to approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association membership. Thank you for your consideration.
Move approval.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
There, a fee associated with this? I'm sorry, I don't know that and I don't see it on here. I see the application.
Yeah, there. Dr. O'Philly, do you know what the fee for it is?
There is a, I don't think there is a fee. It's just an annual membership.
An annual membership that, in order for us to compete with other schools that are part of the membership.
Okay, and we don't pay to be a part of it. Okay. I was just, then no. Thank you.
All right, so the motion in front of us is to approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution and waive the need to read the enclosed closed resolution. Do you have a motion for it? Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Hines?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Seven, zero, motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is three forty-five point two-four, the Regional Enhancement Milage Resolution. Ms. Campbell, I know.
Well, in, in our last regular board meeting, Wayne Risa representatives came and presented on their budget. And at that time, they said they would forward the board's resolution to approve the regional enhancement millage resolution. And this would be a renewal of an existing revolution, resolution? What time is it? It's for one point nine eight one-two mils for a period of six years.
So just to be clear, this is not new money. This is?
It's not new money and it's, it's levied by Wayne Risa, but all of the districts in the county have to go before the board for an approval.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Hines?
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
All right. The next item on the agenda is three forty-six point two-four, Citizens Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Just a reminder, if you haven't filled out a form, you still have time to do so now while the other folks are speaking. We are gonna have a three-minute per person time limit if we, however, there is no overall time limit for this portion. The first one I have is Tana Karpinski.
Good evening. I just wanted to share a couple of points of clarification that received a lot of discussion tonight in regards to budgets that have happened in the past and what has or hasn't been done over the past several months. I just wanted to remind the board of a few items and clarify some things for the general public. Back in June of last year, for your budget, you approved a final budget with a projected fund balance of eleven percent and then approved a final budget of spending four point eight five million more than in revenue. So when we've heard board members discuss tonight that we are approving deficits, there has been no action and the former board president, Mr. Cox, stated at the board meeting when the audit was presented and questions were asked that their only job as the board was to oversee one employee and that was the superintendent. There has been no accountability of that one employee to come up with a plan that has brought us here tonight, that was voted down to approve the original amendment and the original borrowing of the note by two of the board members. So I just wanted to point out that when you already knew there was a problem well over a year ago, you approved a budget to exceed almost your revenue by five million dollars. So you knew that your fund balance was going to be decreasing and well below the fifteen percent board parameters that you had at that time because you were already below that when Ms. Cleaves presented your budget last year. I also wanted to clarify privatization wasn't on the agenda tonight, nor was it on the agenda at any of the previous board meetings as far as seeking to privatize the Transportation Department. When that occurred. When that occurred after the audit in October, it was President Cox's closing comments where he stated it was his intent to go out and seek proposals to privatize the transportation department. There was no agenda item on the board meeting at that time about privatizing transportation, and in less than twenty-four hours, RFPs went out requesting bids to privatize the transportation department. So I just wanted to clarify how some of the actions previously took place.
Thank you, Ms. Karpinski. Next, we have Laura DiMarco again.
So I'd like you sitting there to think about when you started asking questions. Did you, like our board treasurer, start asking questions when you knew there was a problem, when there was a mid-year amended budget brought forward, and some members of the board just wanted to stamp it, approve it, and let it go on? Or did you start asking questions when you found yourself in the minority position on a number of issues over and over and over again? Did you start talking about transparency back in, back when this problem was first discovered in June? Did we care about transparency then, when we renewed the superintendent's contract and added a clause where he can carry over vacation days and in twenty-three, twenty-four school year can get a payout for them? This was approved, my understanding, is after the original discovery was made. Did we care about transparency when our previous board president in the year two thousand was recalled from Westland City Council after an investigation into a violation, possible violation of the Open Meetings Act, which did not result in saying there was no violation, which resulted in saying that there was not enough evidence to determine if there was a violation? There is a very clear difference, difference there, so when that is brought up in later comments, I want to be clear on that. When did we start caring about transparency, about doing things differently? When it affected the school district, or when it affected our reputation, our responsibility, our position? It's pretty clear to most of us here that there are some people who started asking those questions, started changing their tune a lot sooner than others, and there are some people who waited and waited until it was their butt on the line before they were able to start thinking about something different. This whole past year, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting for answers and begging for answers and begging for transparency, begging for communication and working together. We have, back in, what was it, December, when I heard rumors about board members being told that everyone was getting the same information, and then getting on stage and saying, well, I didn't have that information. Well, yeah, you did, you had that information, because there were miscommunications, intentional or not, going on behind the scenes. There's, excuse me, I lost my train of thought, because I wasn't expecting to come talk about this tonight, again. It was important. I was going to talk about how we were discussing how we need to communicate with each other and work together as a team, and the first time that was brought up by our former board president, as far as I recall, was last meeting, after our former board president has been stalling and throwing everyone else under the bus, making snide comments, passive aggressive remarks, rolling his eyes at the audience. It really made me stop and think, wow, why isn't everyone else on the board wanting to work together? Disappointing.
Thank you. Next, I have Frances Doudash. Okay. Because I have Jennifer Owens.
Hello again. I just wanted to make a recommendation to the board that we do a scheduled public forum. The community has a lot of questions. We've been asking for months, just like you guys have, I know, in your own way. We've had a lot of questions that we can ask to you, but we can't get answers back because of the way these meetings are held. So I'm recommending that the board consider doing a public forum with the community so that when we ask these questions, we get some answers back, rather than having to, you know, kind of hear an answer to someone's question through the grapevine or something, and you know, and then we get misinformation. So I know that there may be some questions that you guys can't answer, but at least please consider doing a public forum so that some of the questions that we do ask that you do have answers for, we can hear back from you. And again, that's just coinciding with the transparency that we're trying to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any, any other forms in front of me, so the next item on the agenda is three forty-seven point two-four, acting superintendent's reporting comments.
I have one more.
Oh. You know what, I do remember that, so, sorry about that, Sam. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Hold on for a second.
It's all right. You're good. Yeah, you're good.
Okay, first and foremost, I misspoke when I was up here earlier about, it was tax levy. I did not mean tax levy, I was talking about the millage. I apologize. In here, the Board of Education is the face of our district. The community staff and parents are angry with what and how the central administration is doing things. As the Board of Education, yes, you have been elected by the community, but we are holding you accountable to have your one employee, which is your superintendent, do their job, the position that they are over, central administration, and as such, needs to have those staff being held accountable for what is going on. This is the workings of the district. For months, we have come up here and have voiced our concerns, grievances, frustrations. There are other items that needed to be considered and done so with urgency. I'm speaking about the superintendent's search. I have asked about this. When are the meetings? Will the community be involved? Are there going to be surveys online? Because that's how it was added on there last year, but I know, I don't want to overlook that, because that is something that's moving forward in the district, and we need this. It was stated tonight, quoted, you adopt the deficit budget, okay, and let us move forward and make the change. Well, I agree with that, but as a community representative here, I say, we do not trust you, meaning the board. We have not seen the work, the plans, or the progress that warrant us to trust you. You're asking us to trust you? We're telling you, we don't trust you. We don't trust what's going on with the board. I see the dysfunction of the board. I've been around since two thousand and nine in depth. Most of you know me, a lot of you don't, but most of you do know me. And the dysfunction that you have has to trickle down into central administration. And if that happens, how can this district move forward? I am sitting there, and I'm trying to keep my mouth quiet and calm, but it's irking me. I am to my wit's end with this, what is going on here? I'm standing up for the staff that doesn't have a job, or doesn't even know if they have a job. Community members with parents, I don't have a child in the district anymore. I'm a community member, but I'm here for the children. I'm still here. They don't know what their classes are going to do. I have special ed two kids, I had two of them. One of them sitting here tonight could not get into this district, but the other one was, and did get good special ed. And now you guys are destroying it and getting rid of it, along with the autistic? This is unacceptable under any and everything. Can we please see the report that the CFO will reproduce to the state aid which was mentioned tonight, be put in the finance committee reports so that we could see them? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, next item on the agenda is three forty-seven point two-four, acting superintendent's reporting comments.
Hey, good evening, I feel like I should almost say good night, because it's getting so late. So I just want to start with some highlights. So as you know, last week, our Career Tech Center hosted camps for elementary and middle school students. This week, Busting with Learning will visit district neighborhoods and elementary schools to distribute materials, notebooks, and parent resources. And in addition, our food service department is coordinating the Meet Up Eat Up Summer Food Program, providing breakfast and lunch at various locations across our district. A big heartfelt thank you to our staff who make all of these programs happen. As we look ahead, we are taking active steps to address our financial situation. We are currently already reviewing all of our programs and all of our departments, and we will soon send out a survey to gather input from all stakeholders. Additionally, we plan to hold community meetings together for their input. Those will happen very soon. Our goal is to identify areas for reduction by late July. So this week, we will also be reaching out to our union leaders to meet with them, to gather ideas, to get their feedback on the upcoming community forums and the community surveys, and we do look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. The next item on the agenda is three forty-eight point two-four, review and recommendations, Board of Education. I'll start with Mr. Neal.
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned earlier, the state law says we're not allowed to adopt a deficit budget, but we did. And there's a caveat that we read, that says, once we do the thing we're not allowed to do, we have to report it to the state immediately, and then we have thirty days. So we really don't have, it has to be done, probably before the end of July. But I said a lot tonight, so I'll just end with this one thing. In your personal finances and in my personal finances, you probably haven't found it any different than I have, in that you don't get ahead financially by borrowing money. It doesn't make you money unless you find a way to use that money to start a business or something that's going to get you revenue. The borrowing of the money that we just approved tonight only exacerbates our problem, only means more cuts have to be made. I'm not in favor of that, and that's why I didn't vote for those things. I understand the desperate situation we're in, but the desperate situation should be forcing us to meet tomorrow, the next day, the day after that, until we have a workable plan, not the end of next month, but one that gives us a budget that preserves as many people as we can possibly preserve. Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
Thank you, President Gray. This evening, I think the Board of Education had some very constructive discussion about very important decisions, and I, I appreciate that, that everyone's voice could be heard, because often, when I have something to say, my voice isn't heard, it's shouted down. Tonight, the union representative, Tanya Karpinski, got up at a heated moment and said, it's my job we're talking about. And it is her job to some degree. It's also the job of everybody that works for the school district, but it's really about the students and what is available to them when they go to school. But really, who owing forty-six million dollars is about, is about every property owner in the Wayne Westland School District. Just a few months ago, I got a report from a builder who's building homes at Madison, and those, that builder reports that those homes, which were listed in the area of three hundred thousand dollars in Westland, actually sold for over four hundred thousand dollars, and the average increase on each of the houses for extras was up to forty-six thousand dollars. So people are paying, or were paying, four hundred and forty thousand dollars for homes in Westland. Ten of them, they weren't even built, only two basements were dug. Now I ask you, next year at this time, when the school district owes forty-six million dollars it doesn't have to pay, how many people are going to want to move into the Madison property at four hundred and forty million dollars? Further, I will ask you, what do you think will happen when you go to your bank or credit union for a HELOC on your house, and they tell you that the value of your house has dropped? The issues that this board is dealing with doesn't just affect the employees of the district, who largely have been the ones you've heard from. There are many thousands of people who own property in this community, and the value of their property is based upon the solidness of this school district. It's foundational in our city. Tonight, members of the Board of Education said that they were going to diligently work on making decisions that would reduce our expenses so that we could bring our budget in line. I would say that the value of our community depends upon this work being done fitfully and quickly. And one thing's for sure, whatever President Cox was responsible for has to end tonight, because I never approved one thing that put forty-six million dollars in debt on this school district. Thank you.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you. Just very quickly, in, in terms of time, I've heard several times tonight from the community, we're waiting, we've been waiting. It should be of some note to you that this board has already acted. We, I'm, I'm not going to discuss it, but when we came to our June fourth board meeting, when we were promised the plan and found out that our superintendent was going to push it another year, we came into open session, and this board did what it had to do. We are attempting, do I like what we did tonight? No, I don't, I don't like it at all. But when you talk about ten percent cuts across the board, whose child are we not going to take care of in special ed, when we cut two million dollars out of it? How many teachers' salaries are included in that? This, I know you don't want to hear it, but we have to, at this point, go back to the drawing board, and we have to identify those cuts and make those cuts happen. I apologize that we were led down a primrose path that didn't work out, but that being said, all eyes are wide open, things that we've been asking for, we will continue. I will say to you that there has been more transparency to the board in the last three weeks than there has been in a couple of years. And I applaud that and the people that are making that happen. I'm going to say it one more time. What we have to do is going to hurt everyone. So as a community, you got a, you got a choice here. You can burn it down with rhetoric, or we can all get involved together to try to make this thing happen in our district to get back to the place where it needs to be. Channel two, channel seven, you know, we, we come to the, to the table there, and we talk about all the people that are leaving our districts, and all the kids that are leaving our district just to try to make a point. We can't burn our district down. And at the same point, when, when this board does make decisions that you don't like, what, what, what is next? We can't have it both ways. We can't have all of our teachers and a budget, a, a balanced budget. We can't have all of these programs and have a balanced budget. The money has to come from somewhere. And as I've said many times, it's going to hurt before it gets better. But we need our community to walk through this with us. Thank you.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Curry, you've been doing an amazing job. One thing I do like about you, you've been here since day one, like back ninety-seven when I graduated, so you've been through all the superintendents, you know the history.
Don't tell them how old they are.
I'm sorry, but I just feel comfortable with somebody who's been in the district for all these years and has relationships, and again, I've seen more positivity in work. Today, we had a, a committee meeting that was just phenomenal, like I was so impressed, like the different outside-of-the-box ways, I mean, everybody worked together, and that's what we need to do, like again, with the surveys, I love it, like, because people want to make it work, you all want to make it work, we all want to make it work. And again, like, when I joined the board, we were already at four percent, almost getting taken, you know, when I joined the board, like, two thousand and fourteen, so it's doable, it's possible.
So it's doable. It's possible. You can get out the hole. We just have to think of outside-of-the-box type solutions. And like you said, it hurts a little bit, you know, but we have to make those tough decisions. What I don't like is us keep being accused of not making the decisions because we are. At the same time, we can't make decisions if we don't have the proper information. We have to have all the correct information. And Ms. Campbell, you're doing an amazing job. Like, I was really impressed with your outside-of-the-box ideas that you had at our committee meeting today. And, you know, even the Finance Committee, you guys are working hard. It was a thick packet. I'm like, man, that thing was just thick looking through the board. So people are working. They're making decisions. But at the same time, you can't serve on the board and say, "Hey, I don't want to be on the committees and I don't want to do this and don't go to events, and then cut our stipend. We're all getting paid the same money." But then be like, well, nobody wants to work. You can't be like that. You know what I'm saying? We're trying to work together. And at the same time, we are going to make cuts. Like, we have to. We're not going to sit there and let the budget get out of control. But we have to have a full picture. Got to see what we're doing. We have to start with something. If we know, okay, the fund balance is at this percentage, then we'll make the decision, look at everything. Like they said, programs. We have buildings. We have, you know, different things to look at, you know. Then, again, we have contracts we are obligated to at the same time. So it's going to take a little patience. And again, like I said, we can do it. We just have to work together. But I definitely like, some years ago, when I was a parent under Greg Berry's seat, I think they had the closures of those 12 schools. And they actually had a special committee with community members. So I felt great as a mom to say, "Who they care about by opinion?" when they were doing those massive, you know, closes. So like, I know you guys want to be involved as well. And the nicely young lady in the purple, I'm so impressed with like how you do your research. And if we have like certain community, like, you know, leaders to get together and like kind of put our brains from our think tank to say, okay, well, how can we solve this problem? So, you know, we're pretty open in like, you know, having those decisions, you know, to get that information. But I'm really impressed with people are back there finding the facts. And, you know, now I'm about to go home and click for myself. You know, I wrote some notes down just to kind of see. Because we do want to fix it, and it is possible. It's not doom and gloom. We're going to get out of it. There's other alternatives. And again, like I was saying before, they had the Wayne Westland language where we got $7 million from the legislators. So I'm just saying, there's other options as well, you know. We just have to be creative. So that's all I have to say. Like, again, we're working on some solutions. I'm really impressed at, you know, the work that Ms. Curry has been doing and Ms. Campbell. I mean, and even Dr. Ophelia, you guys have really been trying to work together to, you know, figure out some solutions. But we just got to see the big picture. And then that way, we can kind of figure out which way to go.
All right, Ms. May.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to say thank you all for being here tonight and for standing and staying the entire time. I appreciate that. I appreciate hearing your comments and your suggestions. That is most definitely appreciated and heard. I also want to thank the administrative team. Just, we've had several meetings, various committee meetings, and the meetings have just been extremely productive as that has been shared. It's been...the space has been open to ask questions and to get information, to get the answers, to have the follow-up. When we had our board workshop, we had like three pages of follow-up questions. And two days later, at Finance Committee, we had the answers to those questions. And so I thank you all for that. It definitely helps us to make decisions. I also have to say that I appreciate the discourse that took place tonight just around making some decisions, people being able to ask questions, to have their opinions heard. So thank you all for that. And I just appreciate each of my fellow board members because we have been spending a lot of time together, and it's been pleasant. So that's, I appreciate that and just the work that we are doing. As Dr. Weaver said and everyone else on the board, we are going to have to make some hard decisions, but we make hard decisions together. I just encourage you all to continue to come out when Mrs. Curry releases the dates for the community forums, which I appreciate hearing just the next steps coming forward, that you all come out and bring neighbors with you. As Trustee Cox shared, this is a community. This doesn't just affect our students in our district, but it does affect our homeowners. And we want to hear from everyone. So I want to make that clear so that we don't have low numbers for the community forum. I want people to come out and take advantage of that opportunity. If people are not available, please utilize the community surveys that are going to come out because we will be reading and listening to everything that you all have to say. And with that being said, thank you and have a good evening.
Ms. Anthony Mitchell.
Yes, I also would like to say thank you guys for coming out. We appreciate your support. Your support keeps us going. Your support helps us know. And remember what we hear. You guys voted us in. You wanted us to take these seats, and you wanted us to do this job. And I'm trying my best, along with my colleagues, to do our very best. And like everybody said, I have to echo. It has been a beautiful thing for the last three weeks. You can ask the question and get the answer. You can ask a question and not get 99 emails for one question. So it has been very pleasant. But I want you guys to do me a favor. Because it is, we are going to have to make some tough decisions. But I want, the favor I need from you guys is the same favor I'm going to ask to my colleagues. Take the time and enjoy your summer. Enjoy your family. Enjoy your friends. Sit out on your front porch. Sit out in your back. I make a commitment to sit on my front porch at least one hour a day because I work so hard in the community. But take some time for yourself and your family. And we're going to figure this out. And when we come back in August, we're going to have a plan. Well, we're going to have a plan by Ju... We're going to start the plan in July. But next school year, it will be better. But enjoy your summer. Don't spend your summer worrying about if you're going to have a job in August. Just enjoy your summer. I know that's hard to say. Oh, also, June is Gun Violence Awareness Month. I am having a prayer at Pep Rowley on Wednesday, Juneteenth, in the city of Inkster on Inkster Road in Michigan Avenue at 11:00 a.m. You guys are welcome to come out. We're going to talk about gun violence. And, you know, I don't even have to bring it up what just happened over the weekend. Just what can we do about it? We have to continue to live. Like, I just encourage y'all to sit on y'all porch. That's one reason I'm fighting against gun violence. I want to be able to sit on my porch. I want to be able to go to the park. I want to be able to do whatever I want to do without the fear. So if you're available on Wednesday, come on out. If not, light a...cut on the porch light. Light a blue orange candle. Turn your city orange for Gun Violence Awareness Month. Thanks, Mel.
All right, I'm going to echo what many of the board members have said about the last few weeks. And thank Ms. Curry and her team for the hard work you've been putting in. I've heard it from everybody up here as well just about that they've seen how hard you're working at coming to something to, you know, up with some ideas. And I want to thank all of you for staying tonight, as late as it is. It was said earlier, you know, that the community can't trust us.